Hey, everyone. I'll take that wave as a fact you heard me.
I need to grab something off my printer. I'm going to be super fast.
We didn't actually have a meeting notice specific to seven o'clock, did we? Or did I miss this somehow? I know we had our standard five thirty-one, which of course we didn't have today.
Um, the agenda was published showing the seven o'clock. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, right, right. I, no, I saw that.
Okay.
I just didn't have a little pop-up that told me seven o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 nothing to be sorry about. I sent my own pop-up to come up and remind me.
Yeah, there was one actually that popped up for the council of the whole or it was an hour out and I got nervous that I'd missed the time and then I went back and looked at the agenda, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So it looks like we can start. We have a forum. So, good evening and welcome to the Duval City Council Meeting of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Michelle Hoads and I will be chairing the meeting tonight. Because the mayor, Okerlander and Mayor Pro Tem Amy McHenry are both away on conference. So I will now call this meeting to order at seven oh two. And will you join me for this play suite? I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
So, city clerk, will you please conduct roll call?
Councilmember Isaacson.
Present.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McHenry. Councilmember Mercer.
Here.
Councilmember Hoak. He's here. You're, yep. Uh, councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengyel. Is, let me check. She's in the audience and now she
She should be here.
Hmm. Trying to log in. So. And Mayor Okerlander. Not present.
Thank you, sir. So did, was Dorothy able to get in?
Councilmember Lengyel.
There she is, yeah.
So I'll keep moving along. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda as presented.
So, second, Shaffer.
It's been moved in second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 This motion is approved. Public comments, we'll go on to public comments. Well now, um, all members of the public who would like to speak, please press the raise your hand icon or press the star nine on your phone if you're calling in. Um, individuals can speak for three minutes and if you're representing an organization, you can speak for five minutes. We ask that any comments related to our public hearings for this evening be provided during that agenda item. So clerk, um.
Yeah. We have one member of the public who would like to speak and is, his name is Will and I'm now going to allow him to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Will Schlegel. I live in Monroe. I worked for Riverview School District for four years. I run the blog disgruntledemployees review. I had, Monday, I sent certified mails to the mayor, all the council members, school board, Office of Public Instructions. When you read it, I would like you to consider the facts and not the friendship who may be whispering in your ears suggesting something that the facts do not say. The issue has to do with Anthony Smith, the superintendent of the school. Back in September, he claimed I was on school grounds doing trespassing. I demanded proof. All schools have cameras to be able to see all sides of the property. He did not provide any proof, neither did the school board provide any proof. They all went silent when I asked for proof of this false statement. A false statement in the RCW is a gross misdemeanor. The Duval's general ordinance says that officers are to at all times endeavor to preserve the public peace, prevent crimes, detect and arrest lawbreakers and so forth. I had asked the police department to help out with this. The police department was silent too. In the, in the certified letters, you will have more detailed information. The reason this is important to the city is if you look into the many safe place to work organizations, least of which are LNI and OSHA, it will identify breaking state laws as a hostile workplace. It would also discuss sex discrimination, bullying and these other things. All this information can be found at disgruntledemployees review. I had marketed and made detailed reports and tried to get all possible public records from the Rimview School District, from the records that I know. Several of my requests were absolutely denied, which is against state law. Some of my requests were only partially filled. The reason this is a matter for the city to look at, one, state law under your jurisdiction, laws were broken, but more importantly, hostile workplaces bring violent workplace. And for years, I have been trying to tell people that about the blog, about the evidence and about how there's complicity within the leadership and the documentation can show it, but nobody is responding. I'm not even sure why the police did not respond to me when I asked for their help. That is why in the in the certificated letter you have, I have letters of communication and all that. What I am asking is either the resignation of the school board Anthony Smith and Corey Lorish, who was the bully and participator in sex discrimination hiring practices, or that a completely independent investigation done. I am willing to work side by side with that independent investigator to let them know what rocks to turn over, define more details. Thank you for your time. I'm asking this in the public safety and for student safety in the Riverview School District. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't see any other members of the public with their hand raised. I do have a written thing to read, Councilmember Hoak. Okay. Here I go. Oh, I'm sorry. I do see a hand raised. Sheriff, I'm going to allow you to speak. One moment while I do that. Okay. And, um, go ahead, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. Good evening, everybody. This is related to the sewer moratorium. Is this a good time to bring it up or should I wait till it gets discussed?
I think it would be best when it is on our agenda item this evening, if that's all right.
Yeah, sure. So I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, or you have a public comment in writing?
Um, I'm, okay, here I go. This is from Juniper Belmont. Juniper Belmont, a Duvalian, and I have a few comments and questions that I'm sending to you so you have it in writing in case I don't make it to the council meeting this week. Question, why has the speed limit on Big Rock changed to twenty-five? It doesn't make sense to have it that slow on so many parts. Number two, has the council ever considered adding a land acknowledgement to council meetings? This land belonged to Coast Salish people, especially the Snoqualmie people. The treaties governing the land, namely Point Elliott, have been broken and this is an important part of local history I think should be acknowledged. Specifically, I'm looking for a meaningful statement to begin meetings, acknowledging the people whose land we are on, land that was settled by colonizers with little respect for native inhabitants and land that was ceded in treaties since broken. Lastly, the statement should acknowledge that native people still live and work on this land. Here is a resource and there's a website listed that's very long and I won't read that. Number three, the YouTube page where meeting videos should be posted has reposted the same video multiple times instead of the correct video. See, and there's a link provided. Thank you, Juniper Belmont. And that's the, that's all that we've received.
Wonderful. Thank you. If there are no other comments from the public, I will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? You're muted.
So, so who, Shaffer?
Second in, Councilmember Isaacson.
It's been moved in second that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This motion carries. City clerk, would you please read the items approved by the consent agenda this evening?
And it's for committee of the whole and regular meetings, March first, twenty twenty-two. Payroll and claims approval in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and six cents. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash sixteen resolution supporting Snoqualmie Valley Mobility. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash nineteen council committee assignments for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. We'll now move on to fire district report. Is Chief first, first going here? No? Okay, police report, Chief Dubach.
Hopefully my videos stay on because last two times I've turned it out, I've completely got kicked out. So you have to apologize if that happens again. Um, good evening, council, city staff and members of the community. Chief Dubach Duval Police, I'll be providing you with a police staff report this evening for February twenty twenty-two. Uh, the police department's been busy recruiting, hiring and training new staff. Uh, we have a recruit that began the academy on the ninth of February and he's scheduled to graduate on June sixteenth if all things go as planned and there's no COVID that happens. The two lateral, uh, we had two lateral officers that began their twelve-week field training in February. Um, and we also began the background process on an out-of-state lateral candidate. We have reopened the application period for the lateral and exceptional entry candidates and hope to complete another round of oral boards uh, in April to fill the two remaining positions that we have. On three twenty-nine, um, twenty twenty-two, we will be hosting a supervisor skills assessment to fill the open sergeant position that we have. We have three candidates who have applied and are participating in the assessment and we're looking forward to get that first level supervisor filled again. Uh, job description for the police administrative support specialist has been created and approved and it was posted with a closing date of March thirty-first. Uh, this is a civil service position, so we'll be presenting the process and interview questions to the commission at their next meeting for approval and we hope to have oral boards the third week of April for that position. Um, we've met with various regional entities regarding access to mental health professionals for our patrol staff. Um, this is an important piece while addressing persons in crisis within our community. Many of these entities do not have the bandwidth to take on our calls for service at this time. Um, so we're working with Fire District forty-five to explore other options to determine the most efficient and effective service for our community. Uh, currently, we're using mobile crisis unit, um, which is positioned out of Seattle, so their response is not as expeditious as we would like it. So we're looking for something a little bit closer. Um, lastly, I've submitted the, uh, February twenty twenty-one and February twenty twenty-two police stats along with the minute, the minutes from the February twenty-second public safety committee meeting in your packets for your review and are there any questions?
Councilmember Lengyel.
Uh, yeah, I think I might have missed this when I looked at my packet. So if I did, I apologize, but I, you just reported that you just finished the new job description and I have been asking, the council gets copies of those so that we have an understanding of the work strategy for the positions we've approved. So if I missed it, I'm sorry. And if I didn't miss it, if you could send that out to the council members, uh, I would appreciate it, which is what we did with the other positions.
Okay, I, I submitted that, uh, city administrator, so I'll make sure that he gets that to you.
Thank you. That way, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, just, just a comment for me, uh, chief, I have seen one of our newer officers on patrol already, so I appreciate, uh, that and I'm glad to see that, uh, all of our recruiting efforts have, uh, you know, have come to at least some, some fruition.
Yes, I, I'm very happy with the, the recruiting process that we've had so far and the applicants that we got on board. Um, I'm very excited to get back to full staffing levels.
You bet. I bet you are. I bet you are. Yeah, and again, anything I can do to help out, including, you know, participating in any of the interviews I've led to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just curious how often we are having to call the crisis unit out of Seattle. It sounds like something closer would be more ideal for sure.
Fortunately, we haven't had to call them too often. Um, we've been able to either convince the people to get voluntarily assessed through the, you know, the resources we have here locally. And then now that the, the reforms look like they're going back to where we're a little bit more hands-on with those people to get them the, the help that they need, it's, it's been very beneficial for us to be able to, you know, do that. But, um, it's not very often, but when it is, it, it takes them anywhere from an hour to three hours to get out here and, you know, we're having to stay on scene and, um, you know, ba- basically continue to assess the situation until that we can get those folks out here. So Fire District forty-five is looking into a couple of options and I've been working diligently to meet with all these different groups in the area to see if they can take us on.
That's great. That's really important work and, um, yeah, hopefully we can find something sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Thank you, Chief Dubach. Are there any other questions for Chief Dubach? I appreciate you coming to us with the report tonight. Thank you. So we will move on to council committee reports, sign up committee. Any updates?
May I?
Can you report on that? I
Councilmember Napland?
Sure, I just sent out the notes and let me get them up. So I have them in front of me. Let's see here, hang on. I'm not used to doing this. I'm not, um, the actual chair. I was just filling in, so let's see here. So we met on March third. And during good of the order, it was brought up about the bond resolution where there was a question of whether we were allocating or reallocating. And there was also a question about the source of the bond repayment and whether or not if part of the bond was used for the public works building, which supports employees that oversee our utilities if utility capital funds should be used to repay the bond. So that's something that we discussed potentially bringing forward at a future COW to, you know, document a strategy for repayment of the bond. So it's in line with what the money was spent on. We also discussed February sales tax. It showed, um, you know, once again, strong sales tax and it was reported that we potentially could see a three to five percent sales tax increase year over year and that could become, seems to be a normal trend, but time will tell on that. Finance staffing, it was reported that our accountant has given notice and there are some discussions about how best to fill that position and if it would convert to a full-time position. And in the meantime, there might be a need for some temporary help. And councilmember McHenry stated that if there needs to be adjustments to our work plan, that council would like to know so that we could be flexible with what they're facing in finance. And then we also discussed the utility discount. And what we would like to bring forward are three options for council to consider so that they would be ready to go and at the next council meeting, um, it would be easy to see the cost of each option. And also in the future, we are hoping to have, um, it structured so that if we want to make changes to the structure of the discounts, whether, you know, raise them, lower them depending on our funding availability, that it would be done through the fee schedule. So that would make it a lot easier. And there are a few other things, the notes from the meeting will be available for the rest of council if anyone's interested in anything more. And our next meeting is March seventeenth and that will be for procurement policy only.
Thank you, Councilmember Napland. Councilmember Lengyel has a question?
Uh, yeah, I just have a comment, um, is, to expand on something the report, uh, mentioned, which is, when we learned we had extra bond proceeds last time around, uh, finance committee was apprised of that circumstance and discussed a variety of uses for the funds. In this situation, we were not apprised of the action which was taken at the last council meeting. Had we had an opportunity, I'll be very specific about myself, had I had the opportunity, I would have desired more discussion at an FAC. Uh, and so this is a departure from practice in the past. It is the job of the finance committee to assess risk, financial risk to the city and we were not given that opportunity. Again, specifically, I wasn't given that opportunity and I, I was very disappointed.
Councilmember Lengyel, I will update the meeting notes because I remember that now and I just didn't have it, have it clearly in my notes and I think that was an important point that you brought up and so I will adjust the meeting notes to show that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lengyel. Councilmember Isaacson has a question?
Yeah, Councilmember Napland, just want to clarify, I think it may just been choice of words that I misunderstood. When you say sales tax going up and intending to go up three to five percent trending, I'm assuming you mean revenue from sales tax is going up. There's no plan for sales tax to go up anywhere on a regular basis. Is that correct?
You're right. I should have said that in a more precise way. Yes, revenue from sales tax is going up, the rate that is charged to the we, through the retailers, not increasing at least.
I assume that, but I just wanted to kind of have the record clarified. Appreciate it. And then the other question said someone was resigning. Who, who's resigning? You said, not, not our, our?
One of the, our accountant.
Okay.
So that is, um, you know, will be very hard for the finance department and
That's not our finance manager, is it?
No, it is not the finance director. It is the accountant. It is another position. I'm sorry. I guess that's what you were asking.
Yeah, no, I could probably ask you better. Thank you.
Anna is here. I see her. She can't go anywhere. We're not letting her.
You're good. I didn't want to throw her name out there if that's who it was. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for finance? No, we'll move on to land use and, um, I'll just give a brief update on that. We do have a land use meeting tomorrow. And the agenda is open gov, automated delivery robots and fence permit implementation. So that's what we'll be working on tomorrow morning. The next, or any questions about that? The next item is public safety. Any reports?
Uh, we'll see. Yeah, I have a very brief report, uh, what the, what the chief said. But, uh, no, we have not actually had a public safety, uh, committee meeting, uh, in recent weeks. Uh, next, uh, next meeting is later this month.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaffer. Um, council procedures, um, I guess that's my update. Um, we do have, we didn't, we canceled our meeting for this week since we have a new committee member. Councilmember Isaacson is joining us, so we're going to be rescheduling. We had it on the schedule, I think the second Monday of every month. So now we're gonna plan that this week. So we don't have it on calendar yet, but, um, and let's see, human services, um, I have it written here that there is going to be a meeting for human services coming up. Is that correct? Oh, Councilmember Isaacson. You have a report on that?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to ask if we skipped public works.
I think I did. Yes, public works. Thank you for touching that. Do we have a report on public works?
Let's see, since, uh, councilmember McHenry is not here, uh, I can give a very brief, uh, report. Let's see, Steve, uh, the director, Steve, Steve Lunschowski sent out a report, uh, or summary earlier today actually is what's going on. And I believe that is part of our packet and if not, perhaps we should make it so. But anyway, Steve gave a very good summary and I think, uh, better than I can give. Uh, Steve, do you have any highlights you want to point out from, uh, from your summary sent out?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Shaffer. Uh, Steve Lunschowski Pub Works, I would say no, but, uh, I can't even remember last Wednesday. So, um, I know we went over a few things, waste our treat plant stuff. We went over some of the timing. Recruitment for engineers, um, contract has been difficult. Oh, boy. Talked about the stormwater program and what was going out for public comment. We had a good list, but I don't remember. Sorry, Rick, I wasn't prepared.
No, no, and I apologize. I wasn't, uh, I wasn't either. I didn't realize councilmember McHenry wasn't gonna be here. Let's see, you also said, I'm looking at it right now. You also had a summary of our ball field rental, which it's, uh, it's, uh, starting to Let's see, you also said, I'm looking at it right now. You also had a summary of our ball field rental, which it's, it's starting to book up for the summer. The sewer treatment plant for its train is moving ahead. It looks like we got a, at least one response to our request for proposal for the membrane portion. Oh, Third Avenue Open House, that is important. That's tomorrow, I believe. We have two open house sessions tomorrow to public sessions to discuss the Third Avenue improvements. And let's see, couple of other minor things. Oh, no, this isn't so minor. Our Big Rock Park survey had 752 responses, excellent response from the community. And we got a lot of good information out of their very, very encouraging information on what the community really wants out of that expansion. I think that's it. Steve, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember Neplin has a question?
I just have a follow-up question about the survey response to the Big Rock Ballpark expansion. I'm thrilled that so many people are wanting to be involved and help us determine what to do with that new space. Just looking at Facebook comments, since I haven't seen the actual results of the survey, but looking at Facebook, it appears there's a pretty broad. There's, there's broad desires that we can't do it all. And what I'm hoping we could consider is expanding on the amount of land that we could use to provide some of those amenities, maybe provide a little more elbow room. You know, once you add a field and some parking, if that is something that gets chosen, there just isn't a lot of elbow room left over. And I think what, just looking at the results on Facebook that I saw, I think people really want to have more of a large community park where there can be many amenities, not just athletics focus. And I'm hoping that's something we can look into. The Parks and Opens, Parks Trails and Open Spaces Plan does specify that we should be looking for additional land acquisitions early rather than later. Land only gets more difficult to obtain once development pressures area. And so I, I'm hoping we can consider that. And I don't know if that's something that the Public Works Committee can look into. I would be supportive of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Neplin. Are there any other questions for Councilmember Schaefer?
No, just, just a comment on what Councilmember Neplin suggested. I think if we can actually find and afford more real estate for parks, I think it would be a huge benefit to, to the city. That's something that the Public Works Committee is currently not looking at directly. And Director Lunschowski, do you have any thoughts on that? Is there something that you guys are maybe doing that I'm not aware of?
I would say currently we're not doing any exploratory work on additional property. I know Mr. Kenny is on. We are in council, not COW, so it's a little more formal, but I think simply some direction out of council. It's a little odd nightmare is not here. Pro temp is not here. Administrator is not here. So maybe a follow-up discussion. We are going to talk at the next committee of the whole on the park itself and go over the results. So maybe that's a better table to, to set that conversation for the next council meeting. So COW chat, council. Maybe there's a motion made or something like that.
That sounds great. I just wanted to throw it out there. So it would be on the table.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I, I certainly support, support the idea. I think we've been so focused on the Big Rock Ball Field expansion. We haven't really thought about much past that, but, but it is timely. As you say, real estate is not going to get any cheaper.
I have a question for you. Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I was just going to remind us of Councilmember Brenetti. One of the things that she reminded us of when we looked at acquiring Big Rock was that we were sure that we had a variety of uses, including the natural areas. That's something she brought up a number of times and I, I want to make sure we, you know, don't forget what were, I thought, important recommendations.
Yes, no, and yeah, thanks for bringing that up. The, without going into specifics, the community survey was very strong in that respect. Mixed use for our expansion. Mixed use, you know, including, you know, some potential, you know, ball fields, athletic facilities, but also other uses as well. So it was a very balanced response. And I think very much in the vein that you, you just mentioned.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. I appreciate it. Next up, are there any other council reports at this time? Um, so next on our agenda is our director report from Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members of the audience. I will share my screen really quick. There we go. So good evening again. So this evening, we have a couple of, I think it's an exciting announcement, obviously comes out of community development. But we have updated one of our pages to include the toolkit for the mobility and transportation web link. So we hope that you have a chance to go and take a look at that. And that was done by our assistant planner, Acela. So we're continuing to look at some updates across the board of our community development web pages. Now on to a couple of other items. At the city, we did apply for an urban forestry grant. This will allow us to review our existing tree protection policy, create a street tree species plan, mentor and train our public works crew on care of our trees and also evaluate hazard trees to know when we need to cut them down or to do some additional trimming of them to get a few more years out of them. And then also to create standard educational brochures and social media posts for our community. We are going to be a recipient of about $80,000 for our 2024 conference of plan update. So we're excited about that. In comparison to the 2015 update, we received about 25,000. So it's a substantial increase over what we received the last time. Based on some early comments that we did receive earlier this evening, we're already looking at our city YouTube station to update and refresh that. So we wanted to let you know and we'll report back when we get it up to date with 2022 meetings on it. Mountains to Sound Greenway, we are currently reviewing the draft National Heritage Management Plan. And we plan on bringing forward a draft lever, level of letter of support at a future meeting. I believe it will be at the April 5th meeting, but as possibly as late as the second meeting. We are continuing also to work on the opening of our facilities and in-person meetings. So stay tuned on that. That's actively occurring with administration, the mayor and Steve Lunschowski, who is working as also as our emergency management contact. We're also working on a proclamation. So that would remove us from the city emergency order of the pandemic. So we're actively working on that as well. And that will be brought forward to council either the first or second meeting in April. As you are aware, we have job openings in finance and police. We did have, as, as reported, we did have somebody resign. But we're also going to be filling that gap with a, a temporary, a temporary person from a temp agency. So we're gonna keep, keep work going. March of the Vegetables is this weekend, so don't forget about that. That usually draws quite a few within our community and also is a good source of tourism and economic development as well. We're starting to see our summer event applications coming in. So do all day sand blast and we expect music in the parks to submit there's pretty quickly. If there are any questions, I can certainly take them.
Do we have any questions for Director Thomas? That's a great report. It's kind of fun to see that we're coming back to life.
Yes, we're very excited about that internally and externally, I'm sure. Thank you.
Report. Next up is city administrator report. Director Thomas will fill us in on for administrator Opal and talk about Port of Seattle grant application.
I really did combine them. I apologize. I did it all in one. Sorry about that.
You did, didn't you? Here, I'm just reading my notes. Um, now, next up, we have our annual report from Waste Management. Marcella Manabu, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pronounce your name wrong. I'm sorry. Hi, Marcy. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Great. So good evening, council staff and members of the public. My six-year-old just ran by. Don't mind him. My name is Marcy Manabu. You were so close, Councilmember Hoag. Appreciate you struggling through that. And I am the contract manager for Waste Management. Which, by the way, we are now just called WM. We've gone through a rebranding. So we're way more than waste. And so we dropped that from our name. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, I think, here. All right. And so every year as part of our contract, we submit an annual report to the city of Duval. And tonight, I'm just going to go through a little bit of a summary of that and share some kind of exciting things that I think are happening with us here locally. So very excited as well for events to be coming back online. So as you know, we're an avid supporter of Duval Days and the summer stage and things like that. So really excited to see those coming back online this year. Also a member of the chamber, and we did a fun presentation last year for Earth Day. So that was a lot of fun as well. When we talk about garbage in our collection, of course, we got to talk about diversion. And that means you know, the percentage of materials that we collect that we don't send to the landfill. And so that's what you see here, kind of a snippet of the residential side of diversion. And Duval is just about 58% of the residential material we collect is not going to the landfill. As you can see, not everyone subscribes to compost. And that's probably the opportunity there to divert more materials as you can, you know, put yard and food waste into that gray bin and keep that out of the garbage. So to get folks to sign up for that would be the way to increase your diversion in the city of Duval. On our education and outreach side, you know, we've added a lot of tools in our toolbox to be able to really meet folks where they are, especially during the pandemic and things like that where we haven't been able to meet in person and do our tours of the facility in person and that kind of thing. So really we've added a lot of virtual options for folks to reach us and you know, kind of have that education still, especially around recycling. You can see we offer things in different languages, tours of our recycling center, which is just in Woodinville, the Cascade Recycling Center. Things like that. So really wanted to highlight the great work that our local outreach team is doing. And got to talk about the contract because it just started here January 1st, our brand new contract. Really excited about getting that off the ground. I know I worked a lot very closely with Director Lunschowski on getting this going. So a couple of big things to highlight that happened in 2021, the big swap where we changed out over 8,500 carts for residential folks over November and December. So that was no small task to do with, you know, thinking about holidays and weather and things like that. We included the city sticker to go on the garbage carts as well. Some of those were, didn't apply quite as they should have, got a little wet there with the rain. So we've been working to get those restickered over the last few months as well. And then we did collaborate with the city, providing a utility billing insert to let folks know about the changes with the new contract and the new carts and some social media content as well. I just wanted to highlight a few of the, I guess, new services or things for residents and businesses in the contract. So one of the first exciting things that is available now for all residents is an on-call curbside cleanup where you can set out once, once per year, every residential account can give us a call, email us and schedule this pickup. It's good for one cubic yard. Not sure what that is, right? But if you think about two of your recycle cans, those big 96 gallon cans together, that's about the space of a cubic yard. So that's for kind of household trash, vacuums, you know, kind of things that won't fit in the cart type of thing. Plus you can also set out two large items. Couch, furniture, tables, no appliances, but, and that's again, no charge for all customers, one time per year. So that's really exciting. Yard waste or compost service as well is weekly now year round. So you don't have to kind of remember the schedule, going to every other week in the winter and when that happens and keeping track of that. We also used to take, use motor oil, but now we've added also use cooking oil. So every week, any Friday, you could set out one gallon in a milk jug, something like that of these items. Label them if you can. So we know what we're picking up with your recycling. And as I mentioned, larger recycle carts. So before the standard was a 64 gallon and now it's the biggest 96 gallon cart. A lot of cardboard happening right now, a lot of Amazon deliveries and things like that. So might need a little bit more space. However, I did get a couple of calls from folks that maybe didn't need a bigger can or didn't have the space for it. So we do still have smaller sizes available upon request. So we can change that out. I think the biggest change for businesses is recycling is fully included with your garbage now. And so you can contact us if you have a business and we can right-size your service. So that could mean, you know, increasing your recycling or adding recycling so that then you can reduce your garbage, which is what's going to drive your rate. And then a good improvement for just the overall community on inclement weather. You know, we had snow at the end of the year. And so we did have to delay for one week. And I'm glad we didn't have to delay a lot longer than that. But I know I talked to Councilmember Neplin and Director Lunschowski that week and we were ready to go. If we did have to delay a second week, we were already planning where to put the drop-off site so that any folks that could make it in to drop off material instead of holding it over another week had that opportunity to do so. So I think that's a great improvement for the new contract too. And the last thing, I think, you have this, my last slide here, just some WM things that I wanted to point out that I'm excited about. In an effort to really close the recycle loop, right? When you see our drivers out there or our sorters that are working in our recycling center, that kind of thing, all of our uniforms are now made from recycled plastic bottles, which is kind of cool. And then all of the new carts that we're purchasing, and in fact, the carts that we just delivered in Duval are eco carts. And what those are, are carts that are made from. the carts that we just delivered in Duval are eco carts. And what those are are carts that are made from post-consumer resin that we pick up from the curb. So going from the curb, we worked with our cart manufacturer to make this eco cart out of that material, and now it's coming back into the community. So all of the new carts that we just delivered in Duval were eco carts as well. So kind of exciting. And then coming soon, so this is happening in 2022, our Cascade Recycling Center in Woodinville is going to be undergoing a full rebuild, which is really exciting. We're modeling it after our MRF of the future, and MRF means Material Recovery Facility. We like our acronyms at WM, so you'll see a lot of those. And it's won a lot of awards, can have a lot of great technology put in, which will help us increase our processing capabilities and produce just higher-quality material at the end. You know, WM is North America's largest recycler, and we are committed to recycling and improving that in any way we can. And then the last enhancement is our WM Smart Truck is what we call it, which is also coming to our residential trucks in 2022. It's basically just a system of cameras that's going to go around the trucks, which we already use for the commercial trucks that service dumpsters and things like that. And so these trucks are gonna, sorry, cameras and this technology will benefit the community by having improved safety. We'll keep our drivers in the trucks more focused on driving. They'll be more efficient, and so we'll get improved service that way. And then on the recycle side, reducing contamination. And so I don't know if you've seen our recycle trucks, but the arm picks up on the side of the truck and it kind of lifts the cart all the way over the top, and so we can't really see what's coming out. And so with our camera system now, we'll be able to see what's coming out of the cans, and so we can let folks know if there's something that doesn't belong in the recycling and help to clean that up. So all that's coming soon. Exciting stuff. And that was it for me. I'm happy to take any questions and appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you, Marcella. Does any, does anyone on the council have questions for Marcella? Councilmember Shaffer?
Not really a question, more of a comment. And Marcy, I just want to let you know that our residents greatly appreciate your expanded services you brought to Duval. The, what's been highlighted to me is the motor oil, cooking oil, recycling, and also the, the, the call-in service to pick up bigger, bigger items. People very much appreciate that. So thanks, thanks for providing that to us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Isaacson has a question.
I was just curious, the history around here, has there been any explorations? Well, the places I've lived, we had satellite stations where people could drive their garbage or their recyclers. And actually, at satellite service stations, people did portions of the recycling for you. In other words, with the glass in one bin, cardboard in another, paper in another, and so on. So it reduced huge cross-contamination issues and also saved people a lot of money because they did their own garbage delivery to satellite services. Has that been explored in the area here at all? Or has it been here before and got shut down?
Um, I have not heard of that. I mean, we provide collection services, so and then our facility here, and that's part of our upgrades that we're doing, so that we can sort the materials even better than we already are. But I have not, I'm sorry, heard of any satellite collection.
I appreciate it. Just curious.
Councilmember Napland has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to put a plug in for that bulky pickup option, and I utilized it, saved myself a ton of time and struggle and money. And I hope others in the community are aware of that. It's really a great benefit. So I don't know if the city has put on our Facebook page any of these new enhancements to the community. Maybe it's happened and I missed it, but it's definitely helped me, and I'm assuming it'll help others. So thank you. And it was super easy. I just called and they just, I mean, I think they picked it up within just a couple of days. So it was really easy.
Glad to hear that. We've had 16 so far this year, by the way. So I did grab that number before the meeting.
Councilmember Mercer has a question.
Yeah, and this, not to put you on the spot, this is more of an informational question. So if we need to follow up offline, I'm happy to to take the response that way as well. But I am curious, you know, we're, we've kind of been two years in COVID. We're now hopefully, you know, coming out of that. But much as we've seen changes in sales tax and purchase behavior, you mentioned Amazon specifically. I knew we saw a big uptick in online sales that helped sustain the tax base during that period of time. But just how that has affected from a capacity perspective, the amount of material collected, even though it may be a little more efficient in terms of the processes you're putting in place. But if you'd seen any type of material uptick with more people at home for a longer period of time, actually generating additional waste and recycling?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, in early COVID times, we certainly saw a shift from commercial tonnage going down and the residential tonnage going up with people working from home. In the initial year, it was like a 7% increase, not in Duval, but specifically, but just in general. Now, things have evened out and leveled out to this point in the pandemic, though. So we're pretty much back to normal volumes.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from Marcella? No, thank you so much for presenting to us this evening. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. So great to see you all. Thanks for the time.
So, oh, did I miss one? Our next presenter tonight is Daniel Hadal from Art Architects, who will be talking to us about the citywide facilities and master plan project status. Daniel.
Councilmember Hoag, so Steve Lenashewski Pub Works. As Daniel is being upgraded to a presenter, this is just an opportunity to provide an update to the council on the overall capital facilities, planning, and review project. So without further ado, we have Mr. Daniel Podol here with us to go over it. He does have a slideshow, and I think the clerk, if Daniel has the rights to present, that'd be great. If not, we're gonna have to run it for him.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Good. I've met some of you before. Nice to see you again. And yes, thank you for inviting us for the update tonight. I don't usually start presentations out with apologies, but I feel like I feel have to on this one, as it seems it's taking so long to get through this, you know, assessment things. There's been numerous unexpected pandemic situations that have come up for, for all of us. It's just sort of lagged the schedule. But that said, I'll show you where we are and the plan to get to the end. I've got about 10 slides that are showing examples of of either things that are in our report or items that are to come. So you guys just feel free again to jump in with questions at any point in time. And I will share my screen here if possible. Can you all see that?
Yeah, some of the print's a bit small, but we can see it.
Okay. This is, we, the slides that I'm showing are, are 10, about 10 or 11 slides that are roughly giving you a description of the tasks that we have on hand that we've been doing, one through five. This task, for instance, is an example of the facilities condition index that we've completed for each of the buildings. When you get the final reports, and as you see the final reports, you'll get this as one of the items that are linked to numerous other pieces of the report itself. But as of, as a FCI document, this gives you a broad view of all the facilities in the left-hand column, meaning all the buildings are listed there. And this, this then denotes them from a color coding and numeric designation to the assemblies essentially for the buildings. And if you can see, or eventually will be able to see in a larger report, the topics along the top are building components. There is the perceived items of buildings. There is site. There is exterior, interior, mechanical, electrical items. And each of them be, get a ranking, and the ranks are color-coded as you see below, where five is a life safety or an immediate code issue, which is red. Four is an orange color with a significant need, where repair and maintenance will be needed in one year. An important need is, is the color yellow, or number three, where we say that likely things will need to be addressed within two years. And similarly, with the color green and number two for five years. Ongoing maintenance is considered just a color-coded item number one. The ultimate goal of this index will be paired to each building. And to the very far right, you can see a quick, again, a quick, non-biased and non-weighted. I'll say non-weighted at this point because we'll be weighting it when we get our costs all pulled in for each of the buildings. But you can see the color codes and how they can track. The little arrows, the blue arrows that fall within the right side show you where the buildings fall with this judgmental overview right now relative to the items that you see in the index itself. For some of you have done this before, or if not, again, this is, again, a facility conditions index, and I think better, better described for that would be a little bit further description that you can see here that the ultimate goal will give you essentially a facility depiction. On the left-hand side, here, you see buildings of facility one through three. And then you will have what is the total cost of the existing deficiencies divided by the replacement value. And that will give you a range from good to, good to poor between each of the buildings. This will all be summarized, again, as this is completed and be an item of part of the report.
Hey, Daniel, you said we could interrupt at any time, so I'm gonna take a look at that. This, okay, this is Rick Shaffer, by the way. Anyway, I, unless I missed it, I don't think this is part of our packet. Steve, is it possible to get this at this point in time and take a quick, quick look at it offline?
Oh, yeah, we'll, we can forward it when we're done here.
Okay, great, great. Lots of interesting things there. The print, as Ron said, the print's a little small for us, for us to read, but I get that, at least we get the gist of what you're showing us, and I'm sure there's lots of good information. On this particular, or the slide you were just showed, the white spaces are still to be done work? Is that correct?
Yes, either white spaces are non, non, non-applicable right now.
Unapplicable or?
Yeah, you're still to be done. Yes.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And sorry about you not having the packet, Councilman Shaffer.
Oh, no, 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 big deal. We'll, we'll look at it.
In continuation of, of, I would say, Task One, part of our charge also for the full team to come out, we have completed very specific walkthroughs of each building. And again, I'm just showing you examples here. If I were to pull them all up, there'd be hundreds and hundreds of pages, and I, I don't think you all are care, care to see that at this point in time. But in the final report again, you will see these each building set up as a separate draft report. This one in particular, again, is just a piece of the city hall. And this is what, again, what it will start to look like. And this one, I know, I can't even read myself here, so I don't think you guys would want to be reading it now. Part of Task Two and Four, which were the, which we consider the capital improvement planning and financial analysis. This is the lag right now that we're struggling with a bit just from our cost consultant. I've been in contact with him, and I'll show you at the schedule end here to get this updated. But this is the ultimate goal that will be applicable and applied to the facility condition index and all the reporting that you've seen. We'll have the, a spreadsheet that is linked, again, if you see the building components here on the left, specifically to those same site, or sorry, those same components on the condition index, site, exterior, interior, building systems. And then these will then be populated with typical useful life, remaining life, quantity, unit cost, which will be key. And then what for you folks will give you the capital needs assessment for a 20-year time, timeframe. Again, I'm just showing you one page of this, everybody. You don't see the rest of the years here, but an example that you can follow. And by the time you're summarizing it at the bottom, you guys are all in my way here. You, you can have a tracking balance of, of needs that'll be financially, hopefully understandable, for you to track over time. In addition to all of the assessments we've been doing, or I should say, yes, in addition, we also have completed with another of our consultants, Pinnacle, Task Three, which we consider the operations and planning for the public works side. Not to mention the space planning exercises that I'll get into in a minute with everybody, but Pinnacle also provided a separate, parallel public works assessment. And again, items you cannot read here, but very similar in task where there's a summary report. There is current existing spatial needs. And then this, I should say, this larger spreadsheet, if you just jump to the larger one of the bubble diagram, it's the space requirements for future needs. And they've gone so far now, we have that complete to essentially take those space diagrams. And to the right, you see a graphic of, of, again, conceptual bubble diagrams. This represents space, real space and time. And so again, you will see very shortly that we'll have an idea of how much area the public works yard, for instance, will need. And that will be very important for us to move to the next phase, which is again, doing some some very conceptual space planning for you to show, show you. You spoke about properties, places you need to look about property, think about property purchase. Any questions there so far? Okay. And somebody tell me, I'm not seeing if there's hands raised. Just you, you guys shut me up if there's something I'm missing from anybody.
Excuse me?
Councilman Lengel, yes, I see you.
Oh, yes. Okay. Um, when you, your financial analysis, would you, would an alternative thought about that be is that we really end up with an asset management plan in a lot of ways?
Yeah.
And a replacement strategy?
Yes.
Yeah, but I thought, that's what I, that's what I, that's the terminology I, yeah, I was going to work.
And that, that's, that's critical, Councilman Lengel, too. And one of the things I'd like to get from you folks is just some dialogue. And again, I'll show you that in schedule. Stephen and I worked on trying to have a touchpoint or workshop with either council or a steering committee or something to fine-tune that and to understand a little bit more about assets you are wanting to keep and/or just talk to us about your thoughts on those assets. We heard a lot of thoughts from your departing project manager when he left. We heard a lot of thoughts from your departing project manager when he left and. Again, it was never dialogue with you folks, so we will not miss that dialogue. And then some of you, again, I think most of you know, but some of you participated, these are two examples again that we have completed. And will be summarized in a cleaner form. Is really task five, which was the programming and planning level design. This, this came. I would say parallel or sort of after the assessments, you're sort of doing at the same time. But mostly after. And th- these documents, for those haven't seen them, are, are planning programming. From our ex, Tom Beckwith, our expert, where we plug in. The needs of each department. And these, these examples, again, it's the administration. Sheet and the police sheet. And then essentially, the people that are there, the, the FTEs, the full-time employees. And the needs over time and how it will grow. And then you folks again, got back to us comments on those after we had distributed those as well. That, that then leads to this where again, some of you participated, we appreciate you with that. In this exercise, it was our space, space planning exercise where. The each program element is put into this bubble diagram, if you will. And placed based on our meeting, we, we, we all met together. And move these things around so that they made sense to this adjacency diagram. What you then comment back were priorities, meaning if you see numbers and lines on this, everybody had the opportunity to mark these up. And show the priority of adjacency between each, each of you within a department. So again, you're seeing these handwritten notes that to be close to someone, closer to someone. You want it to be a three, which mean that's critical, I need to be near that department. Two is important, one is nice to have and zero is no relationship. So the final diagram, you'll see this, you will see this cleaned up to be the conceptual planning level. For the new, a new city hall, a new city hall combined, police department, so forth, something like that. That I know you, you all are excited to at some point get to. That said, again, I thought before we get to that stage, I at least should show you example of what a final product will look like. And that is, I'm just showing example of the C-Tech City Hall feasibility. What we'll do is three options, likely three options for you. Where we take that conceptual planning diagram, turn it into an architectural bubble diagram, which is this. And shows relationships of how they may fit together on a, I would say, an amorphic site right now, amorphic meaning we haven't chosen a site. I, as the architect, have a couple of ideas. That again, I would like to communicate with a workshop group eventually and show you some of those, but. Again, the idea is that it shows you how much space you will need on a, on a site itself. And we will again finalize that, this is another example of that same project. Where it just gives you pros and cons, simply listed, this can be something that's again publicly shared or not. But gives you the ups, the thumbs up or thumbs down on different options itself. And we of course want your folks' input as we get to this, this level. And that's just another, which shows some of the ideas that will give you what you need in square footage. You'll see a chart off to the side that gives a better idea of how much square footage is built in. That said, I wanted to just simplify, we had a very complicated schedule to get to this point and we just tried to simplify it here. I, I went backwards in order of, of I would say, not importance, but of things that we're doing right now. If you take this point in time and get us to a point in early April. We will have the draft. Summation of all the assessments complete. We'll have the inventory infrastructure complete, that's four, three, two, and tax four, three, two, and one. And at that point, we will make sure our cost estimator has them. For an assess, to assess the optimization of everything and to discuss funding sources with you folks. Just again, what you're thinking, big picture and how that might go about, but we'll have some numbers, some real numbers for you. And we're giving that a, you know, again, about a week for him to do that. While I, while this was about assessments tonight, I did want to just show you the planning level design thinking, which is task five. That we have started also, we've been doing that, we're ongoing with that. And would like to get those three options we talked about from all that programming effort within the next three weeks. Or sorry, next five weeks, so you'll see those options by again, mid, mid-April. And then once we have that meeting with you folks, the green points here again are for. Places for council or steering committee workshops or to touch base. That's, that's owner, we like to say owner homework or owner time. We'll be doing some cost estimating on the ideal city hall, what that building is. And we'll give you a cost estimate on one of those options as well. And then final reports packaged up. With both the assessments and the planning level design. Ideally here by the mid-May, end of May for you folks to review and have any comments that we pick up. Any questions, any further questions? Steve, would you like to make any comments or?
Sure, I guess, you know, for everybody involved, Arc was selected in May of last year, we got kickoff in June. Pretty heavy, you know, work on their end, all the consultants inspecting and. Getting literally into every nook and cranny in all the city facilities. Well, it kind of came into fall, we lost the PM, so we've been going through now the pandemic, so. Progress is, is being had, it is a certainly not a nuts and bolts kind of, you know, design. So it's a little different, more, more planning level slash engineering work, but. Nonetheless, fun, Gavin's handling, you know, this now with this group and having a good. A good time, lots of work and then trying not to spread our consultant arc into too many ways. You know, we found a good team and they're doing, you know, great work on this as well as trying to balance the other needs of the city on current construction and design, so. Yeah, we're hopeful to move forward, good news, Gavin and I get some reprieve, new project manager, the other one starts tomorrow, so. Start to offload, maybe we can breathe and take lunch and that kind of stuff, so. We'll get there one of these days, but it is moving forward, I know it's a very important document and process to the city, so.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Daniel. Councilmember Isaacson has a question.
Yeah, Daniel, I got two questions, slide one, Councilmember Schaffer. Mentioned, you know, the white spaces, the zeros, so when we look at what we have now in the packet. To the right, the summaries, are those zeros factored into the formula right now or are they isolated out so that the? You know, the, the summary on the right really reflects what you have done or is it skewed because of zero, obviously in a summation would. Would affect it drastically.
Yeah, it's, it's skewed right now. Yes, and it's not the things, the, the, the white that you saw, I think was mostly for the Doherty Farm. Farmstead and those we have to weigh a bit differently, being a historic property. You know, I, I know you folks, I don't think are going to invest in electrical upgrades and. Mechanical upgrades and things like that, so that's why those predominantly are just sitting as an open, open spot right now.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the Big Rock structure, storage structure, for example, has a lot of zeros in it, so I think that's skewing it far left to blue, right? So I just, so when I go through that conceptualize, if some of those turn red, it could pull it more towards the middle, not. I'm just curious.
Actually, the Big Rock is, is one that we really just didn't have to do. It's, it was just sitting there and we did go up there, by the way, we did go up. And the storage facility up there is just in really good shape. You know, everything up there looks, you know, pretty current and you've got some bomb shelter. Facilities that won't require anything. We did, we, there's a dent, for instance, in the storage facility siding that we, we commented on, so.
I, I didn't mean to single it out by any concern, I just, just so when I read this, I understand where the deviations in the current. Marker could be, and then second, second question I had was on your, your bubble chart, I think it was a slide three, your task three. Your growth projections or space needed. Are, are those numbers given to you by staff for projected growth or I mean, how are you coming up with the numbers of staff? Numbers and square footage required associated with growth?
It's a combination, it's a combination of staff and our, Tom Beckwith, our planner. He has, he has a formula that shows you what type of growth you'll be having over a population. Increased in population over time.
Kind of a standard deviation from.
It's a standard.
Population growth and, okay.
And we'll clarify that, it's, it's three points, I think it's. Again, I've done, there's numerous projects that I have, but one of them, I think it's thirty thousand, forty-five thousand and maybe fifty thousand in population growth. So that's all based on population growth over time.
Will I have error bars on it to kind of mark?
Yeah, you, you actually see it in the program document, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel, very much for this information. You mentioned a, a workshop of sorts with, I think with the council. Do you have any idea when, when that will happen, any guests at this point?
Yeah, we had, we planned that in this schedule here, let me come back a minute. And again, I didn't coordinate with you guys at all, I was just actually.
Sure, no, understood.
I tried to pick a Tuesday. But, but again, it doesn't have to be that. Our, our, our one, our first one here was April nineteenth. Was the, you know, again, to have sort of this a- asset optimization discussion. And then the second was, actually would be great if we could do everything, so April nineteenth for not only that. But as well as a council workshop on our first thinking about design. So a, you know, a city hall design option. We're trying to be efficient to hit you both with that at the same time and it doesn't have to be that, but. Again, we're trying to push this along.
Sure, okay, yeah, no, that's good to know, I just wanted a general idea when to expect it, so about a month away.
Councilmember Lengel?
I'm, I'm not muted, I may, okay, thank you. First is the comment for Steve, Director of Public Works. This must be a bit of a dream come true, I remember one of our first conversations. You're discussing your twenty thirteen facility plan that went nowhere, so here you go. But the other comment I had is, has to do with our existing buildings, we, we know that there's been a. Fair amount of deferred maintenance. I just want to put this out there, we have a main street with a character and. You know, sometimes people get run away with thinking and think you just sell things and you demolish things and things like that. But they don't consider adaptive reuse and how that can promote economic development. So I wanted to put that out there for everybody to keep remembering. And under state law, there are special exceptions for how you do that, working specifically with a developer. To achieve maintaining character and so I'm, I'm hoping that the report will. Give us a glimpse into, into that. That because we don't, we absolutely do not want to lose the character of our core.
Yes, and Councilman Lengel, one of your options will definitely address that for sure. That's one of my favorites right now, again, without sharing what it is, but. Deval is important to keep its character and we understand that completely.
Yeah, thank you. I'm having a, well, I just noticed that the presentation was emailed, but even when you try to zoom in, some of the resolution on the slides is a little bit tricky, so. I don't know if there's a draft version where you can actually read it or if that's not actually ready for consumption yet.
Steve actually has drafts of all the assessment reports right now, so you folks are entitled to all those at this point in time.
Great, that's fantastic. And one of the reasons we asked that you come sooner rather than later. Is that we just approved an architectural contract to design. A remodel of the public works building. And when we originally signed this contract for the facility study, it was. Requested that the scope be modified to focus on buildings that house employees. And develop a plan, you know, I, I think kind of what we're trying to sort out is. We have, you know, what it sounds like, an end goal of a new city hall, I don't. You know, it sounds like that might be something that has been worked into this project, is that that would be the end goal. But there's time between that and the end goal. And how do we get from point A to point B and then even when we get to the end goal? The interim improvements, are we investing in something that we will be using in the long term, is it a short-term investment? And so now that especially we're working on remodeling the public works building, if that's not a long-term. Public facing building, what kind of investment do we make in that building? If that becomes potentially a crew, a building for the crew and they need a garage and we're converting it into, you know, public use office space. Conference rooms and things like that, how does that fit into a longer-term picture? And at just the last meeting we had, I heard it suggested that we need to hire someone to start. Land acquisition and designing a city hall, so I'm thinking. Wow, it sounds like we're remodeling a building for public facing use that. Really has no intention of being used for a very long time. So I'm feeling a little unsure and I think that was the reason why we really wanted to have early meetings with you. With council, with the community, so that we could come along and understand the process and understand what kind of decisions may or may not need to be made. And so I'm. I guess, I don't know how you want to take that as a question or a comment, but I'm, I'm hoping to get more information. About the journey and what it's going to look like at the end and, and investments we make in the interim.
It's, it's very, very prudent comment, Councilman Nappel, and we didn't forget about talking with you, in fact, this is. I think this is the plus of maybe it lagging so long is that we, we still want to talk about that and that's some of the things you bring up. Are things that we'd love to get some dialogue and feedback from you because. I've been thinking about it, especially when you think of it as just surge space, right? You folks will need some surge space if, if and when. A new city hall might come along, right? You'll want to move into maybe the visitor center for a little bit of time or something, again, I'm just talking off the top of my head. And it's key again, that, yes, the, the engineering building would be a, a role in that. I mean, it's, it's a small role, but the, the goal there is to keep that building going. At least in the near-term future for the needs now that, you know, Steve is and you all are asking for. So it's a very, it's very prudent part of the conversation, it's not too late, so that I, I don't want you to get to think that. It's too late, it's not at this point, so.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand what direction is, is being taken because a contract has been designed to design. The public works building, but I don't know that I fully understand how it fits into a. Well, I thought it was a long-term plan, but it sounds like it's, it's sort of a, a pretty short interim that there's an intention to build a city hall sooner. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out. What exactly we're doing there.
I think I can only address the, the longer-term plan, Steve might be able to say more relative to the engineering building, but. Yes, that can be retrofitted so that it can still exist over a long-term period. And be a little more flexible for flexible space, we're gonna, you'll start to see some of that in this. Design thinking as we move along there.
So the long-term plan that you're envisioning with your space needs includes that building? Or are you thinking everyone will be ha- Or are you thinking everyone will be hap- I guess I'm just trying to understand what, what end goal are you envisioning and where does that building fit?
It includes the people that are in that building. It won't include that building, but it will include the staff that will, will be in that building. So all that staff will be coming into the broader idea of the city hall.
So yeah, a quick point, just to differentiate as well. So on Daniel's big-picture stuff, uh, my, you know, myself and staff are here as a tool for him to pick our brains. Uh, for example, what was built when? Hey, do you remember how that structure came about? Why does this note say a foundation was existing? Those kinds of things. I'm doing my best to not mess with the brain trash as far as the big picture, long-term vision that he's working on after assessing everything, part of the, the main project. So I want to make sure that's clear, like, we've hired a consultant to do that work. My job is to give me information they need and facilitate, you know, the work on site and, and making sure they're getting what they need to conduct their program and their planning and answer their questions. So I think that's the part, uh, when we did bring the contract specific to designing and rebuilding this structure, uh, that is a separate phase wholly in and of itself. Unfortunately, the same guy on the screen is doing both jobs. So that's a little, it's always a little messy. And honestly, in small cities where the same faces are always there as staff, and then of course the consultant here, so that's, that's one thing. And I think Councilmember Napland's question on this structure and what we have gone through, I don't think Daniel's figured out yet what this may be. He's assessing the building now. We don't have as-built, so there's members, there's, we're checking holes and walls to give them information to know what he can or can't do with this facility. Um, I think the long-term vision, as you were going to mention, at some point, a city hall, and I have not said any new city hall today, tomorrow, the next day. If you've heard it from someone else, that's someone else's vision. I'm just working through this guy on the screen here, so I can't control things that are set outside of this project. Um, so I hope that's a fair statement for those involved, because again, I don't know who hears what from whom, but I know I haven't said anything about a city hall anywhere, anytime. In my opinion, it's a, even if we wanted it tomorrow, it's a ten-year plan, right? So I, I'm not pushing that, uh, at all, just to make that clear. But this structure, whether the staff who are here as a stopgap with engineering, moving in community to development, making some breathing room at city hall, that will be a middle-term investment, five to 10 years, I would expect, right where I am. With that said, the transition of, like you said, a garage or the space, the space planning that Daniel's team is doing on not the rebuild of this building, but the big picture, the maintenance and ops guys, they have their own table and, you know, his, whatever you call your little bubble chart on staffing, space needs, where they go now, where they go later. They likely land here. It becomes a different site. It's close to the public per se. Maybe a garage is erected on the side, more in the fashion that you have now, but again, it's all operations on one site. I, I leave that to Daniel's hope for vision, and I think the point being this investment is, call it midterm, but midterm is a ten-year plan right here. And we did obtain the state's money, which again, you know, staff's always pulled in all these directions, like, hey, we need some improvements. Oh, oh, let's go ask the state to help, so we do have some reprieve on the state side, obviously investing their money and our money, um, and resources and the detail on whose fund and sewer utilities, all that is certainly good stuff. We will, we will handle. But I, I think the point being my assessment of the need and use and rebuild of this building is midterm and, and long-term. It's both, and it won't be anything, you know, wasted in a sense.
I'm just, I just feel like I've been hearing some mixed messages of, we need to hire someone to design a private property to build a city hall. And then, I, I didn't say you said it.
I understand.
I just, I feel like there's a lot of, um, uh, different expectations of a timeline and how you invest your money in the midterm. If that midterm is very, very tiny, then.
Well, I think.
Me as to, you know, spending well over a million dollars on something that might only be used for a few years.
And I see Councilmembers Lengels hand up, but to Councilmember Lengel's point, we've just tried to make a plan, like staff would.
Okay.
Have tried to work on a roadmap for almost a dozen years, you know, it's been a long time. Um, if you think anything in the two-to-five-year term would ever happen, like, that would be a miracle in and of itself, so that's, let's not call it impossible, but even with planning-related documents, very much impractical, so.
Okay, thank you. And I put a plug in to agree with Councilmember Lego, the character, excuse me. The character of this town is extremely important to the people who live here and for, you know, just even just tourism and the aesthetics of our town and, anyway, I just want to express that again, that I, I agree with her and I'm excited to see what, what you might come up with that takes that into consideration.
Looking, I was looking around here, but I left it at the office. I, I confiscated a couple historic society books when I was at the Historic Society. I'll make a donation, by the way, never paid for them, but I will pay for them. But they've been my Bible reading also as well.
Those are Public Works resources. He's welcome to them, so.
Okay.
He didn't steal them from City Hall when he was walking around.
I, I shouldn't, I didn't steal anything. I asked Sean for them and he gave them to me, so.
Councilmember Lengel has a question.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to make a comment about the public work, the existing Public Works Building. Um, I remember, um, past conversations, uh, not just, uh, personally, but also at council meetings. One of the reasons that building is intriguing is that it, the way it is structured, it can be adapted a lot of different ways. And, um, we will need, uh, what I think of as sort of flex space. And the, and I don't see the Public Works Building going away anytime soon, particularly because of its proximity to the, uh, to the plant. And it's pretty common to have utility-related support, um, employees near a plant like that, especially one that's about to expand. So I'm not particularly concerned about losing the Public Works Building. I think it'll be exciting to see how they adapt it, because there's a tremendous amount of wasted space. But to the point of a new city hall, um, and aspirations versus the reality of planning something like that, I mean, you're looking at, even if you started, you know, next year, you know, I, I would say you're looking at like a five-year, I mean, well, I would say just the schematic programming, all of that is probably a solid year. Um, if you're really going to do good input, more than that, certainly if you're going to talk to the community, which you absolutely would need to do. There's the site search, there's all kinds of environmental things which architects don't get into. Those are separate consultants that all have to be consult, you know. So I agree that a new city hall is not something we're going to be turning a spade of dirt in the next few years. I, I just don't see that. And, um, I have a lot of confidence and I'm excited to see the ideas for preserving the downtown. I, I remember A R C in an old, or I remember them in an old Victorian house up on House Street. Um, and it was a, really a terrific adaption, so, and the exterior character was to completely preserve, so. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to the nineteenth.
Thank you so much for presenting, Daniel. And do we have any other questions? Well, I really appreciate you being here. Um, so I'm sure that we'll see you at one of the future meetings.
Thank you all.
You don't have to stick around or you rest.
Have a good, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you so much.
Um, so moving on, we have our first public hearing concerning an ordinance extending the moratorium on filing application requiring, um, filing applications requiring connection to the city sewer system. We have a staff report, and then we will take public comment. The public hearing for this matter is now open at eight thirty-nine P M. Uh, does staff have a report at this time?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Hope.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council, Steve Lenischewski, Public Works. Couple council members have their hands up. I assume that's leftover. Um, so before you, tonight is a public hearing on the sewer moratorium. Uh, the final documents to be considered later in the meeting are under Agenda Bill twenty-two dash seventeen. Uh, this does contain relative information on this item. So staff have been working diligently on the topic. Uh, what we have done, excuse me, uh, in consideration of the moratorium that was enacted in September, is we've continued to review the inflows required of our permit. Uh, the flow metrics are a bit different than they were six months prior, as you can see in the table provided under the separate agenda item. Biological oxygen demand, B O D is up a little, and the total suspended solids are down a little. We do have twelve months of accurate loading data now, which we didn't have at the time of the original moratorium. If you do recall, we didn't move the sampling station prior under D O E guidance, Department of Ecology guidance, and that has been moved back to where it had been the prior fifteen years. Um, those results are more consistent and are, are trending in the way we would have expected, a little more of increased loading. Um, the other elements to consider for the moratorium, we are in contract to go through the redesign or the addition of the fourth train. Um, within that programming work, so the fourth train, the membrane bioreactor and B R technology is part of that. Uh, biosolids handling, ultraviolet disinfection as our tertiary treatment. And then, I think that's that. We have initiated, posted and received our bid for the pre-purchase membrane bioreactor materials. So the fourth train's expansion, uh, the Z weed products, you know, the, the membranes, uh, how that is all going to come together has been bid. That was the eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar bid as received, which is in the range of expected costs. Uh, we have completed the dewatering evaluation, which is how we will handle our biosolids. Currently, we use a belt press. We had, uh, parametrics due, uh, biosolids handling review and reviewed a centrifuge as well as a screw press technology to handle our biosolids, uh, after review and, uh, having site, uh, work done with the manufacturers of those other types of handling systems, as well as reviewing other sites, going over contracts, costs and process. We have selected the centrifuge over the screw press. It is slightly less expensive upfront, and it is also slightly less expensive on annual operations and will yield drier ball, biosolids than the screw press and will yield significantly drier about, drier ball solids than we currently produce, uh, which is all good news. So we are moving forward. We, we staff and our consultant believe we are on track to have the fourth train online in twenty twenty-three. Um, with that said, the design is continuing through this time of year. We'll be going through spring and trying to wrap up things in summer and fall to get uh, paperwork ready for bidding for construction of the expansion in and of itself. So that is the update on the treatment plant, our capacity issues and the moratorium topic.
Great, thank you, Director Lenischewski. So, any members of the public who wish to speak concerning this topic, you can now press or raise your hand or, um, or star nine if you're joining by phone. And, um, you're also welcome to turn on your video when you speak. But before speaking, please state your name, address for the record, and if you're representing an organization, the name of the organization and your position. Individuals have three minutes to speak, and anyone representing an organization will have five minutes to speak.
And we have one person with their hand raised and I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hello, everybody.
Yeah.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so Director Steve, thank you for providing more information into, um, into the moratorium situation. I am Shabir Sharaf, and I represent Anjumanabur Hani, uh, Seattle. Uh, we have a parcel in Duall which we are trying to develop, and this issue is, uh, concerning us, so, you know. And I might have some questions, and if, if you can help me understand, um, you know, the issue a little bit better, I would appreciate it. I live in Samamish, um, and I'm the secretary of the organization here. So, uh, you know, I, I, I understand a little bit better, and you gave some timeline, and you said that this is going to be online, the fourth train in twenty twenty-three. Do you have more information? Are we talking about early or later part or any specific quarter of twenty twenty-three?
So, I'm not sure if we can communicate back and forth during this time, I think it's just testimony.
Okay, okay. So, um, can I just then state some of the questions that I might have, and you know, if, if the department can provide answers at a later time through email, that would be appreciated, because I have sent an email as well. So, uh, you know, we would like to understand the timeline a little bit better. Um, in terms of, you know, uh, if you can be a little bit more specific, at least in terms of the quarter, where this is expected to come online. Um, the second question that I had was, is that, you know, has the city considered accepting land use applications without any commitment for approval? Um, and just start considering it before, um, the, the fourth line becomes active, because we are afraid that we might lose a lot of time between now and end of twenty twenty-three um, on our project. And if the city can consider, um, talking about other aspects of the project while keeping the sewer um, capacity issue on hold, that's another question. And, um, and, and then, you know, just, um, like, you know, are there other, uh, updates that, you know, is there a website or some place where we can see the progress of this project? Uh, you know, can we set up some kind of a meeting with, uh, Director Steve and, you know, uh, or maybe somebody else, um, to discuss this in detail? We would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? City Clerk, do we have any written testimony to provide?
Um, the written testimony came from Mr., uh, Shabir Sharaf, and he has already spoken.
Great, thank you. Does staff have any closing comments, um, on this?
Oh, it looks like Steve is, oh, there he is.
Do you have any closing comments for us at this time?
Uh, I do not. I think, I don't know if Daniel has anything to add, but no.
Um, I would now like to close the public hearing. Oh, Daniel, okay. At eight forty-eight. So now we'll be moving on to public hearing number two. Um, we will hold a public hearing concerning public involvement and participation for the N P B S program. We'll have a staff report and then take public comment. The public hearing for this matter is now open at eight forty-eight P M. Um, does staff have a report on this item?
Uh, unfortunately, at the request of your assistant city engineer, I do. Um, so I will share my screen. I did provide a PowerPoint to the clerk, so we can make sure that's part of the record. Okay, so good evening, uh, Council, citizens and staff, Steve Lenischewski, Public Works. Um, this is the city's in, inside the packet, under the Agenda Bill item, is the city's annual report. This is what we provide to Department of Ecology as required by March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Uh, with that said, the documentation and requirements of our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, N P D S permit, require us to engage the community, and one way to do that is to solicit comments, uh, through a public hearing. We do offer all of the comments, uh, and opportunities to comment. We do offer all of the comments and opportunities to comment through our website. We actually have our own dedicated storm email. So there's plenty of opportunities for folks to provide comment. So with that said, we are here to share this year's report. A lot of the work that goes into the NPDES programming for Storm Drain and Surface Water Management System is public education, involvement, participation and outreach. COVID has put a damper on some of that, so we have stretched very hard to come up with creative ways to meet the intent of the NPDES requirements. In a pandemic, you'll note, we didn't have Earth Day last year, so that is one way we, we check a lot of boxes on informational sharing, community involvement, outreach and then participation in planting events. So that is back this year, we are having Earth Day and we will be hosting activities at the Depot Park. You may have seen some new stenciling that came about this year, the adopted drain. There is a website that facilitates participation, naming drains has been quite a fun event. It has been several years since we've actually participated in and went into the schools. We typically go into the elementary schools. We have a, a live kind of storyboard of a watershed and they dump water on it and you get to kind of play around with first and second graders, which is, you know, that's my, that's my hotspot for my peers. I like little kids there. A little more fun and keep us all young. So that's, that's coming back. And as you know, the city's dedication to stormwater through adding a stormwater program coordinator. And our staff is very excited at, at that moving forward this year. To really put this front and center, it's required to be, you know, kind of everywhere now and all encompassing. Some of the bigger elements within the, the programming is the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, IDDE. So we're responsible as the municipal stormwater agency for spill response, documentation, coordinating with Department of Ecology. And that includes screening project sites, city spaces, outfalls, catch basins themselves, construction sites, not only for large contracting projects, but small home individual improvements. And then citywide public and private facility inspections and reporting. As you are all aware, there are many assets in the system, some small, some large, some man-made, some more earthen like ponds. But we are required to inspect every one of those elements on annual basis and provide record keeping and documentation. Other additional informations within the report are adopting current stormwater design manuals. And those are underway for the twenty, whatever in twenty twenty-two season. So Larissa has started that process through the planning commission and the adoption of the King County Surface Water Design Manual nineteen, twenty twenty-one edition. That we would work on adopting as the city's design detail package. We provide training, again inspections, cleaning and record keeping, as well as asset management and part of our GAS inventory now. Permit considerations, utilize it, utilization of staff and funds to improve the water quality and most effectively comply with permit requirements. This isn't, you know, just for us as a city, it is, you know, part of our region. We do discharge into the Snoqualmie River, which ends up in the Puget Sound, so you know, we are all connected, so. We do our best to try to facilitate information sharing and gathering with the community. And we're pretty excited again for the new employee to participate in doing that full-time. Other than that, that is the presentation. The thirteen-page report is in the council packet. And there is our stormwater at duvalwa.gov email address where anybody can email anytime, any day of the year. There, and there is no action required on this. Staff generates the annual report. We provide opportunity for public hearing. We'll summarize that and get it to Department of Ecology by the end of the month.
You're muted, Michelle.
Thank you. Now I know why the mayor leaves it on all the time. Any members of the public who wish to speak concerning this topic, please now press the raise your hand icon or star nine if you're joining us by phone. Before speaking, please state your name and address for the record. And if you're representing an organization, the name of the organization and your position. Individuals have three minutes to speak and representatives of organizations will have five minutes to speak. So, do we have anyone that?
No, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Give it a minute. Clerk, are there any written testimonies to?
I've received no written testimony.
Okay. The staff or the council have any closing comments? Councilmember Shaker?
My, my only comment is kudos to Director Lenishewski and his crew for doing such a great job with our stormwater. As, you know, as I walk around town, I see the, you know, the storm, storm basins, catch basins, some of them which are actually underground now and, and actually not obvious with, you know, grass or whatever on the top. All those are in top-notch and as a result, our streams and Puget Sound is, is better off for, so thanks.
Councilmember Mercer?
Uh, yeah, just to sort of echo Rick's comments, yeah, appreciate all the work that's gone into this, Steve. Just more on a, on a broader question in terms of outreach, obviously a lot of the examples given here were around, as you mentioned, Earth Day. There's, I know sometimes a table at Duval Days. There, we have obviously a lot of walkers in, in the community, so, and I think dogs are called out and other things. I was just curious if the city historically has done anything in terms of as we come back into the summer months and, you know, car washing, herbicides, lawn care. I'm just trying to off the top of my head, if we do any type of outreach either in terms of the utility mailers or in the mayor's comments to, to educate those folks that, that, you know, the more visible examples may not reach.
Yeah, great question. Everyone who made comment, the staff, I couldn't be probably more hands-off with any of the stuff that we do do here. So Larissa really heads this up and, you know, Gavin, who was our crew lead under Storm, now a project manager, you know, taking care of the system and making sure it is all handled. They've done a fantastic job. Sarah participates in our office with documentation, report writing, coordinating, so she's involved region-wide on our stormwater program management. And I think this, one of these things, again, consolidating it into one staff member to pull it off of everybody's to-do list. I know we are all very excited for, but the question you asked, we do push social media posts once in a while for stormwater management. We do use the utility bill. It will be nice to have, again, someone dedicated to that, moving forward to continue that. There's plenty of education outreach videos to be made. You know, like you said, walking trails, I have constant requests, which ineligible expenses, you know, dog waste stations. We are coordinating with Waste Management, which I was talking to Marcy this week on. We had a bunch of cans out during COVID. I don't know if anybody noticed, but with the can transition under Waste Management's new cans and new contract, a lot of them disappeared. So they are re-implementing that over the next two weeks. At, no complaining to the contract to get that done. So there, there are those things to do, but yeah, there's, there's a lot to do and a lot of other agencies have that dedication and we are really close because we do have that, we, we just need to implement this year, so. It's a big thing. Water, service water management is everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lenishewski. Are there any further comments? I will now close the public hearing at eight fifty-nine PM. This concludes the discussion at this time. Now we'll be moving on to unfinished business. Our first item is Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirteen, The Ridge at Big Rock, Phase Three Final Plat Agreement, Public Works Director Lenishewski.
We're doing a little bit of a switch here. He had, Director Lenishewski had so many items, I volunteered to take one of them this evening. So I will go ahead and share my screen. For the record, Laura Thomas, Community Development Director. Go, I should get faster clicking that button. So we are, obviously we're getting down to the end of it. The final plat is on the council agenda as well, right after this one. I wanted to give just a little bit of a brief history as well. I have to admit, I could have done a better job summarizing and talk about the land use committee work that was done prior to the previous meetings. I wanted to just re-summarize that and then talk about what has changed effective now. So as part of the land use community review, and this happened in mid-February, the committee recommended a reduced number of building permits for both the parks. So we put that into a draft. The committee also wanted a reduced timeline for completion of the parks. We had it set at a couple different months period. So instead of six months, we backed it to three. And so we looked at that and then the, the other item that we did is that we wanted to understand the bonding process a little bit more. So Director Lenishewski actually helped assist on that and had conversations with our council members and sent an email out as well. The following week, we did meet with Toll Brothers to present them this option. They, they did have concerns about the shortened timeline. And so they had requested, can we look at a different strategy? So what they ended up proposing was to not pick up any permits, but only request review of the permits, but keep the number of permits in review the same. So that's basically what happened in that February committee meeting. And then we had brought forward at the last council meeting, an updated agreement based on Toll Brothers' request. But I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged also the land use committee work, because they did a lot of work on this agreement as well and really helped us move it along. We have made one change since the March first, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. And that is that the applicant applied for model home permits in December. They haven't been issued yet. They went through first review. But those are allowed by our home, our model home policy. So I wanted to make sure that we included that in the agreement. I thought that was important because we didn't want, we, we wanted them to be able to pick those up and we didn't know, we wanted to make sure there was a clarification that they could pick up those model homes, that they weren't part of, of the agreement. So the updated agreement for the two-acre park allows for fifteen building permits that can be submitted but not issued. So that hasn't changed since your last council meeting. And then the one-acre park, we had allowed ten building permits per week for up to thirty weeks, review only. And then that would be a total of forty-five. The two-acre park, the fifteen could be released once they completed all the improvements and the city was satisfied and approved improvements. And the same thing for the one-acre park. So once we got through the review of those thirty and the one-acre park was completed and the city approved the park, they could then pick up those thirty permits and then they could, at that point, once that was done, submit the permits for the remainder of Phase Three. One note, none of these have changed, the affordable housing units can still come in and be issued. It's exempt from the permit issuance. And then we did add the new piece, which was for the model home policy. Are there any questions from council?
Seeing no questions, are we ready for a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirteen, which is The Ridge at Big Rock, Phase One Final Plat Agreement.
Our councilmember Mercer, I second.
So it's in moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirteen, The Ridge at Big Rock, Phase Three Final Plat Agreement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. This motion carries. So staff is directed to execute and process this agreement as it is presented. The next item of business is Agenda Bill twenty-one dash ninety-seven, Resolution Approving the Final Plat for The Ridge at Big Rock, Phase Three, Director Lenishewski.
Thank you all. Sorry how these nights got to come in chunks. You get a lot of me or a lot of Laura or a lot of Dana, so with that said, a couple of quick notes here, I mean, move a couple of screens around, sorry. Okay. So, good evening, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, hello, council and citizens. So in the packet today is the final plat proposal of the Big Rock Ridge Phase Three project. Trying to think of the best way to show this on the screen. Maybe no. Able, try to go to the phasing plan. Full screen. Share. Sorry about that. Okay. So on your screen, you should see a light purple and a bluish couple of colored blocks around the plat of Walden at Big Rock. So this project has two parcels of land totaling twenty-three point eight-six acres. It is proposed to be plotted and segregated into a hundred and sixteen residential lots, two mixed-use parcels out in the MUI zone. The city two-acre pad on the southeast corner, three acres of parks in Track nine nine seven and nine seven three in combination, along with the Phase Four part of the project, which has up to ninety units. And associated improvements include sewer water, streets, illumination, obviously residential building lots, along with, I said illumination, street features, including drainage, landscape and other items associated. So for this project, the paperwork has been completed, fees have been collected and/or in the case of credits against impact fees as determined in the development agreement for traffic impact. If they did and completed roadway projects that are on our traffic improvement program, they do receive a credit applicable. It is calculated based on how the math was provided to create the fees, same with the park impact fee as noted in development agreement. Outside of the parks, which we just talked about, a separate agreement for the infrastructure is completed and or bonded for. I think it's been clearly stated to folks, but for the record, we do not receive or prefer to receive the final lift of asphalt until eighty percent build-out per our design standards. So the top surface of roadway will be administered and put on later. The parks are, like I said, in process, as noted, they're coming closer to conclusion. We will have accessway completed in Road D up to the intersection of Road L. Road L will be conditioned to be closed off to regular traffic, even though there will be construction activity occurring in Phase Four. Road D in itself will be clear of construction materials debris and assuming passage of a plat, they, they will be working on that ASAP. That call was additionally had today. In the staff report, the one item that was a little bit of a confusion brought to my attention. The plat documentation is correct, so the storm vault under the park, as well as a storm vault on Track nine nine six do become public elements, so those will be owned, operated and maintained by the city. Those storm elements can convey the majority of the public right-of-way as well as parkland space. There will be two smaller vaults in Phase Four that will be HOA managed as they are majority of runoff control for the homes. And the drainage for some of the road does make it to Phase Three from Four as designed. Let's see. Two other items in consideration. Originally, you may recall, there was a construction easement shown on the face of the plat. So that has been removed. It is in separate document included in this action item. Uh, staff is completely fine with that. Obviously easements and leases are councilmatic actions, as is the plat itself. Uh, but with this 13 foot easement onto the space, there is a vault. The 13 feet does not encroach into the vault structure. It does expire in February of 2028. They would be working through this project and that there is not even a conceived project yet on this parcel. So there would be entitlement and many other items to consider in, in the future for the development of this parcel and the need. Or maybe there isn't a need for the easement on that parcel in the future. But again, it is provided in part of this documentation as requested. So I think with that said, I have hit the highlights of the plat itself. It is, I think, by all accounts, the most pages of a plat I've processed. Um, so it is a big, uh, big undertaking and a lot of work on the developer as well as staff have gone into this. You know, we all have many hours into this project. I'm sure the applicant would like to be all the way done himself, but everybody is working, um, together on doing the best for following the plaque guidance, supply guidelines, as well as the development agreements. That is staff's presentation on the topic. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions.
Do you have any council questions?
Hey Sylvia, um, I don't have as much history on this as you guys do, but, um, in response to taking the city, taking ownership of the vault, those two vaults. Um, within with the different phases, have those phases got out of alignment with when we would have originally taken ownership of those vaults? And the reason, the reasoning of my question is, are we assuming a risk of the city, uh, of taking ownership of those vaults? Whereas if they would have, we have taken ownership of them later, everything done, that the contractor would have been responsible for any damage. You know, flooding, you know, anything like that, that could be, could happen as a result of construction that is now getting done later with us taking ownership of those vaults.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Isaacson. So the water that does flow into those vaults, if it is compromised, the first two years under operations and maintenance bond will be on the developer. So we are, yes, now the owner, but they are still said operator of those vaults. So, um, activities that happen on site, yes, we own them. Yes, we technically operate them, but the, you know, in partnership, the, the contractor, along with Toll Brothers are responsible. Um, very, very common, um, for this to happen. And it has happened where, yeah, there'll be some kind of breach on a site. So runoff water, um, will get contained in the vaults. The good news is it is contained and can be kind of shut off from the system and, and pumped down after an event. As you know, that is a pretty large vault. So that is a new asset the city has to inventory and then, you know, accommodate for in its 50 plus year planning period. So, but yeah, we do, we do manage it in that way. So at the time of bond release, they'll have opportunity to, uh, we will inspect, they'll fix deficiencies at that point. If there are any, clean it out and then kind of turn the keys over to the new car.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, good question.
Councilmember Naplin has a question.
Yeah, I just feel like I need to carry the torch forward for former council member, uh, Jason Walker and his concerns related to taking on these liabilities of the large vaults. And just ecologically and financially, I, I think there would be a benefit to our community to have, um, more natural stormwater management, open, uh, stormwater ponds. You don't have this huge, uh, timeline of where it may need replacing at just astronomical cost to the community. And, you know, 50 years sounds like a long ways out, but, um, it gets here before you know it. And different things can happen, earthquakes, you know, who knows what it's, it becomes our responsibility, everyone's responsibility. Uh, the city's responsibility is my responsibility and everyone who lives here is responsibility to deal with it. And so I, I, the policies and the density, uh, the way we calculate our density really drives this kind of development. So if we want to see a change, we need to make a change in policy and that's really on council. And I've been asking for this for a really long time. There's, there's something called a net density where, uh, currently that the land they calculate, I, I want to build four homes per acre on the whole thing. But there's infrastructure required. And once you start trying to include that land area that the infrastructure needs to go on to as land available to build houses. You really start crunching all your houses into a very small area. Um, anyway, it's a whole, it's a related topic, but also a whole nother topic, um, that, but it concerns me. And when I first read the staff report, it said that the stormwater vault would be the responsibility of the HOA. Since truly, uh, the vast majority of stormwater is residential stormwater. And, um, anyway, probably too late, well, definitely too late on this project, but I, I do hope we look at this in the future. Um, it makes me very nervous long term. And in regards to the easement, I had asked about that. Um, because I didn't realize it had been tapped on. And, um, we already have some pretty significant slope all surrounding that property. And I just worry that, you know, I, I want to make sure that by providing that easement, we don't make it super easy to end up with another gigantic grade change right at our property line. Um, I don't know if that's even something I need to be worried about, but there's a lot of walls and steep slopes right off of our property. And, um, maybe Director Lenny Shesky could weigh in on, um, what level of input we would have on what happens right at the edge of our property. And if they need the easement to, um, to make an even steeper drop off.
Is that a question such to be?
It is a question. I'm just trying to understand. I, I don't want to, you know, make things, you know, be inadvertently agreeing to having a wall drop off of a wall right at the edge of our park property that already is not ideal.
Yeah, depending on what goes there, the mixed use zone has some, Laura knows the zoning better than I do as far as Community Development Director Thomas. But mixed use institutional, I, I think it wants some buildings fairly close to the front edge of the right of way. Uh, with that said, side yard or side setbacks in that zone are such that the way the vault does get buried and comes down in slope. You know, anything we can do to make sure that is constructed in a way that can lay some slopes back instead of have vertical cuts would be, you know, the safest possible. And that's, it's kind of the intent of that, um, access through the easement, which is a 13 feet adjacent. It doesn't, you know, for constructability reasons, it doesn't give me heartburn. Like I said, they will have their own land use entitlement hearings to go through. Those conditions will be, you know, will be stated on that, um, documentation. You know, resurrecting and replacing, repairing the land adjacent as well as in the easement will be, you know, part of the conditions of their project. So I, I am not concerned. I, you know, we did look at it and make sure it made sense. I don't think it's at this point avoidable or unavoidable because we don't really know what the neighbor may propose. Um, so that's kind of a tough part of this. But again, it was on the plat itself, which we talked about, uh, no, six plus months ago. And it has been extracted and put into separate documents, so.
Okay, I don't know, maybe other people don't have concerns, but they would have, they could not make that any steeper than it already is. The prop, they would have to put it back to at least the slope that is there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Or, or maybe it gets flatter because the way they fill their land backfill with some retaining system. I don't know. But again, to do either takes an easement for them to do that, whether it's approved now or later.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Lenny Shesky. Hi there, Councilmember Schaefer has a question.
Um, more of a, I guess, a, uh, well, part question, part, part comment. But, uh, Councilmember Naplin, as far as your comment regarding, uh, stormwater vaults versus more natural like stormwater, you know, retaining ponds. It seems to me that'd be a good topic for the land use committee to, uh, to take up. And I think it's, uh, as you say, with the, uh, higher density housing that we currently have and probably more so imposed on us in the future. That question, I think, becomes very, very important, uh, for us. So if it's not one of the, uh, to do items for the, uh, land use committee, perhaps, uh, perhaps we can, uh, look at that. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Naplin, do you, or is your hand just, okay. So on this item, are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Lingle.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill 21-97, um, which is the resolution approving the final plat for the ridge at Big Rock Phase Three.
You're muted.
I mean, yeah, sorry, second Schaefer.
Is there any other, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. This motion carries, staff is directed to process the plat. Thank you. Moving on to new business, um, our first agenda item is, our first item is Agenda Bill 22-17, ordinance extending the moratorium on filing applications requiring connection to the city sewer system. We held a public hearing on this earlier this evening. The staff has had further report. Director Lenny Shesky.
Uh, I do, thank you, Councilmember Hoag, uh, Stephen Shesky Pub Works. I do not have any further comments. Certainly willing to answer any questions council may have, but at this time you see that recommendation provided, so that's where we're at.
Councilmember Schaefer, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I, I didn't lower my hand.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion on this item? Councilmember Lingle.
Uh, I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill AB 22-17, ordinance extending moratorium on filing applications requiring connection to the city sewer system.
And second, Schaefer.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 22-17. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Real quick, is there a need to suspend the rules for the approval at this meeting?
I think we are supposed to do that, yes. So I'll be looking for a motion to suspend the rules.
You could incorporate that into the existing motion if the motion maker would like to.
Councilmember Lingle.
I'd be happy to include, uh, making a motion to, um, I just lost it, um.
Suspend the three touch.
Pardon me?
Suspend the three touch.
Suspend the rules. I'm sorry, I kept thinking three touches. I, that was bad. We don't need more touches on this, suspend the rules.
Okay, and, and I don't know, we need a second again, but I'll second that.
So it's in moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 22-17 and, um, um, approving this without the three touches. And, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. This motion carries, staff is directed to execute and process the ordinance extending the moratorium. Our last new business item is Agenda Bill Number 22-18, renewal of a moratorium of understanding for the community garden. Director Lenny Shesky.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hoag, Stephen Shesky Pub Works. And yeah, thank you for letting me bring the moratorium, the memorandum of understanding for the P patch or also known as the food forest up at the Dory Farm. Uh, sorry, there was not more picturesque elements in the packet. Uh, just briefly, the staff did provide a kind of RFP in 2019 uh, to move forward and go through a process to engage the community and or users of the site to bring forward an item like this, a design. I don't even know what really to call it, but a, a proposal to use the land in a productive way for the community. At that time, it was a one application with Jeff Davis of the Food Forest. I think he's still kind of hanging around, um, as an attendee, but nonetheless, kind of came to the point with a little bit running behind on staff and understanding that this current, operational memorandum is set to expire. So I know the attorney in the room will tell us, uh, you know, once something expires, it can't be extended. It has to be reissued and new. Uh, however, staff doesn't feel that that's the best interest for the city on time and process. And honestly, an interest in the land, uh, Jeff Davis still does have interest in running the food forest. Uh, a little, you know, it's a big piece of land. It looks kind of small, but it is a big piece of land. He has made some improvements that you can see on the site. And just for those still paying attention in the public eye and for the recording, uh, the, the food forest is an element that exists at the city's Dory Farmstead. Uh, the farmhouse sits on the kind of central south portion of the land, uh, adjacent to the one acre dog park. Uh, Historical Society care takes the property in the buildings for us, not the fields. And then the one acre food forest is adjacent. Um, you can see here a little bit of, this is 2019. So this is before he had started to curate the land. Um, and obviously prior 2017, uh, 2015, when we had more of a P patch and the horse guy on the property, uh, looked pretty tidy. So it has, uh, that was a P patch that was run by the city. So a lot of work has gone into land. It is a lot of work either way. So with that said, a couple of items that we did go over with, uh, Jeff and the food forest, like kind of the three big picture items. One is insurance, two is the water consumption and three is the leasehold excise tax. So insurance wise, you know, just been very upfront, as noted in the staff report, it does cost him over $1,200 a year to obtain insurance to name the city as additionally insured. Um, you know, I can only do so much. I bring the, the items forward, I do the research. I did speak to our insurance, um, provider, WCIA. This type of use is commensurate with the city facility. So with that said, identifying the P patch food forest on our, uh, asset inventory for consideration and annual coverage. It is covered. That specific use is an allowed coverage and as it was put to me, is not an additional annual cost to cover. Um, however, that is still somebody, you know, taking care of the land and providing, um, a change to it. And change can be good, change can be disruptive, change can cause accidents. So, um, our insurance carrier heard thoughts where we add this, if the city considers not requiring the food forest to name the city and patrons as additionally insured, that we would conduct our inspections of public properties that we do now on a weekly basis, um, on a basis to include the food forest in our inspections. So that way we give notice to, uh, the food forest, like, hey, there's a couple of holes that weren't filled in. Or, you know, if there's something egregious, they dug up, you know, a hole to bury a tractor in like that. Being a little bit facetious here, but something that was larger would be remedied quicker. Uh, something less large remedied in a, a little, a couple of week time period. So I thought that was reasonable. Um, like I said, we do inspect the land anyway to facilitate dog park, dog bags and that kind of thing. So, uh, that's kind of one item I'm not overly concerned with and has been, uh, shared with our insurance carrier. Uh, the water cost, we have gone over. The water cost, we have gone over the water cost for the property itself. It varies from, you know, very little consumption to, unfortunately, last month with the leak on the city side, because we do own that eleven hundred CCF, so it was a big month. But in general, it's, the house itself is all on one meter, feeds the new dog park, dog watering bowl, which is on the same meter as well as the food forest. So there's no DDUAC meter, there's no way to explicitly understand how that would work, so options are putting in like a DDUAC meter at the food forest or reviewing the bills monthly and then reconciling them with Jeff and the food forest. And then they would pay the delta on the overage over the base fee, which is two hundred CCF per the city current billing process. With that said, there are events hosted out there, we would have to maintain some sort of, you know, ownership of the use when we have the historical society, you know, the, the field day on the farm up there and those types of things. So I thought that, in my opinion, is a reasonable element to keep moving on this topic. And then lastly, was leasehold excise tax, I think it's twelve point seven five percent since it's city land, which isn't on property tax rolls. If there's any sort of public sale, they are, you know, held to the, paying the leasehold excise tax. There's twelve plots rented, so there's not a lot of revenue and he's more than willing, I, I did put a draft in the packet. I think we have time to adopt and I can clean it up and put it in the next packet if there's, you know, some more questions or no questions. Either way, and make that clear, he's more than happy to reconcile and pay the actual leasehold excise tax. I put a number in there to reconcile annually, he's like, well, if it, if it goes up every month, I don't have a problem. So I would write that, that item that way, as well as paying the overage on the water. I think that's kind of the gist of the differences. He'd like to keep growing it, he's interested in keeping, you know, it, it changing and becoming a more prominent feature on the property. I, I'm more than happy, again, when we get staffed up to put another RFP out for the fields themselves. We had some issue in the past, good and bad, it was more highly used, it did look better when it had livestock on it. And they did become, you know, kind of an interest for the community and, you know, certainly kids greatly enjoyed it, but that's where we are today. So with that said, I'd be more than happy to chat about your questions and comments on the food forest itself. And if you're comfortable moving forward with some changes or no changes, or I take something back, kind of as a counter offer, because it is kind of a contract.
Director Lenaszewski, before I move on, should I?
No, you're at nine thirty, yeah.
For a vote to extend the meeting, we're at nine thirty. Is someone?
To extend the meeting past nine thirty?
It's been moved in second then to extend the meeting past nine thirty. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? This motion passes, thank you. So on to Director, Councilmember Lingle had a question regarding that.
Um, I'm a big supporter of pea patches, in particular, since I've used them a number of times. So I don't have a problem moving this forward, but I guess something I'd like to see explored before we do a new RFP at some point is the issue of the excise tax. Because there are exemptions under state law for excise tax. They, and for profit use, I don't know if that's, I really think this is a for-profit use, but there might be avenues to avoid excise tax depending on the relationship between Doerty Farm and the historical society and the community garden. And so I would like us to, to see what options we have for that in the future. I have seen a situation as a citizen where excise tax, leasehold excise tax was being insisted upon on a nonprofit when there were clear exemptions under state law that were not explored. So I, I want to make sure that we have a chance to look at that before there's an RFP. Sometimes it's for educational purposes, it's the historic nature of the property might come into play, I know in property tax law in King County, they do do discounts, but of course, we don't pay property taxes. But in any case, there might be some, some avenues there for an organization. It might be a small amount of money, but I think we need to understand how to support nonprofits' uses or community education uses and be more sensitive to excise tax and leasehold excise tax. I, you know, again, in a past life, have gone through a number of exemptions on leasehold excise tax. So I, I think it's worth looking at.
And I, I know that isn't current, but I know Jeff has mentioned becoming a nonprofit, which I know you know is very difficult task, so.
Not that much, because you can become, you can become a charitable organization under, under the state and it's much simpler than being a five oh one C three.
Yes, maybe you could help him out.
I would be happy to.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really consider this to be a mutually beneficial agreement. And I'm in support of it, I walked through it just, I think, maybe a week ago. And I can see there's been a lot of work put into it, needs a little spring cleanup. I, I also battle the, you know, some of the same weeds in my own yard, so I'm excited to see that. I'd, I'd be happy to pitch in if there's a community cleanup day for that project. And I'm also interested in seeing those fields be used. I, I think that's what's kind of special about the Doerty Farm is if it's actually run like a farm and there's animals out there grazing in the field, so, you know, I know you're super busy, but as time becomes available, it'd be neat to see that the rest of the acreage put into use. And so I'm in support of the, the changes, I, I think making it affordable is reasonable, especially when it doesn't appear to, you know, place a burden on the city.
Thanks, thank you, Councilmember Napland. So I guess at this point is, are we ready for a motion on this one, or do we want to bring this back? Sounds like, oh, I'm sorry, I missed Councilmember Isaacson.
Steve, so if I understand what you said is, instead of extending the contract, as I speak, we're trying to renew it, a new one with some caveats, some changes to it, right? And, and one of those being the shifting of the insurance requirement that he was paying for, that the city absorbs that within our current insurance, and you've already spoken, and we think we're clear on that. With, with us taking that on, your staff, who I think is stretched thin somewhat, has to take on additional inspections and reports.
Yeah, we definitely.
I'm going to, I trust the fact that you say you're no, you have no worries with that. But with that comes responsibility, if, if something is identified, needs to be fixed and isn't fixed, the enforcement, what happens then? Or are we biting off for a hundred dollars a month, right, is what we're saving this guy? Is it worth it to see when something doesn't get, comply with it, you identify? Now we take on the burden of, okay, what do we do? What's, what's our, what's recourse? Does he come off our insurance and he has to get his own insurance? Can that be written here?
Um, I would say anything is an eligible counter offer, because I would consider it more of a counter offer to change an item. But you know, the contract is terminated with no notice and it's a ninety day termination, so.
Okay.
So that would be why, he could walk away in ninety days and we could be left kind of, we'd eaten the patch for now or trying to do an RFP. I do appreciate sentiment, I think, I don't know if any of you have met Jeff. He's about, well, the nicest guy and most soft spoken guy you're going to meet, so, you know, speaking for his character, not nefarious. And I think a wholehearted fellow to do what's right. And yeah, I mean, I think it's worth a shot. I think he wanted five years, like, two years would be reasonable to see if, you know, it gets any more momentum. And then either, you know, a new RFP at that time, or maybe it's, again, got great momentum, he has a big vision, it is going to take some sort of ass, assuming a creation of a, of a bigger, not a business entity, but some kind of community, you know, nonprofit, like, he's, he's got a big vision and we've kind of presented things to King County Historical, what is the historical group, I'm already losing. Talked too much tonight, but anyway, the, the overarching and over overseeing body at King County Historical Preservation, we are funded by them somewhat on projects, maintenance, the roofs, rehabilitating buildings here and there. So they are partnered and then they participate in, in the land purchase for the city. So we do have obligations as a city to provide uses on the property, you know, commensurate with the past, so. They've been brought into this and, and put on board. I would say, I, I don't think he has an issue providing insurance, would he not? Would there be a business line to float that cost instead of him out of pocket? Because it's, it's not a business-making endeavor at this point. And again, his intent, I think, is a nonprofit to, you know, maybe cover some time of his at some point in the future when it is a bigger and more productive, you know, space, but it is not that now. So I have a hard time, you know, moving on, because it is gaining momentum. Anything we don't do with him, we absorb and work, and I haven't seen any hazardous, you know, situations over the last two years on there from him, so I'm not, I'm not all that concerned, I do understand the concern and it is not a perfect situation. You know, he can garner donations and get insurance, I think everybody would be happier, including himself, he's not opposed, he's like, I don't have the cash flow and it's, it's not like I'm making any money on eating, you know, a handful of tomatoes every week in the summer. You know, and he's more than willing to come chat too, it's not that he didn't want to, but, you know, just didn't, so. Hope that helps a little, but I, I do understand.
Appreciate.
Additional questions?
No, no.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, I was just going to, I mean, again, there wasn't, echoing some of the comments that were said here, I think, you know, you'd much rather have use of the land in some productive fashion than have sort of the land sit fallow. And I think it also, you know, provides a little bit of feedback mechanism to the community as well in terms of what they like and what they don't like. And then in this case, you know, the, the fact that we have a, you know, a, a community partner who's, who's willing to put in the time for not a lot of returns. So if there are things that we can do to make it easier and, and still maintain a mutually beneficial relationship, I think it's, it's net positive. I, I did sort of have a more broad question, not necessarily to resolve today, but I, I'd love to know a little more. I mean, I understand the project in terms of how the parcel came into the city, but like, understanding from a visioning perspective, prior to just putting out a broader RFP, you know, whether it's even in the, in the case of a pea patch, or if we wanted to maintain historical character, you know, seeding it with heirloom, heirloom vegetables, or, you know, fruit trees, or if there's a master plan beyond, in, in terms of what we would want that land to look like. So maybe that's a conversation for the cow in the future, but I, I think, you know, that's where ideally, just beyond the, the financial structuring of any agreement, from a visioning perspective, you know, what, what, an opportunity for the, for the council to provide some additional feedback and/or to, to, to find out what assessments have already been done, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, so I think Councilmember Hoag, with maybe general support, I'll clean it up and put it on the next meeting. And if everybody's fine, just put on consent, if it needs to come off, it could come off, if not, it can stay there and we'll move forward.
Sounds like a plan, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, sorry for the quick turnaround here, but Jeff and I were, I think it's expiring, we got to hurry up, so.
Do we still have time to do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, we didn't sign till April last time, I think, so, yeah.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I, I hadn't really thought as much about the insurance portion until Councilmember Isaacson brought it up. Is there, you said there's a ninety day termination. If there's just an egregious safety issue, could we restrict access and say, hey, until it gets dealt with, we can't, we need to restrict access? I don't know if that's a provision that could be added, I, I'm not concerned we would, but if we did, and it, I don't know, just, just thought.
I think it's reasonable, I don't think Jeff would be opposed.
Thank you. So are we ready to move on? Okay, so the council will now be meeting in an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero to discuss legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation, which the agency is likely to become a party when a public knowledge regarding the discussion is like to result in adverse consequences. So we expect to be in this executive session for fifteen minute duration. And we'll be notifying you if, if we have to go past that. But, so at this point, let's see, we'll be going into executive session at nine forty-six. Thank you. So if you, council, you could close your regular meeting and open your executive sessions in late and go to your executive session and we'll, we'll see you there, thank you.
Sarah, just FYI, I am dropping off the call.
Sarah, good night, Daniel.
Good night.
Nothing but sit here, it was the best council meeting ever, so, right? I forgot it was on Facebook. It was great.
Thanks.
Goodbye later, good night.
Thanks.